Good evening, and thank you for attending the first public hearing to provide input on the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2025 operating in capital budgets. This evening is designed so that the board can obtain public input on the budget as opposed to a back and forth discussion. Board members will utilize what they hear tonight to help them formulate questions for staff during our January 16 workshop and craft amendments for our February 21st board meeting. This public hearing is being broadcast live on AACPSTV, which can be found on Channel 96 on Comcast and Astound and Channel 36 on Verizon. High-definition broadcasts can be seen on Channel 996 on Comcast, Channel 496 on Astound, and Channel 2136 on Verizon. The meeting can also be viewed live on AACPSS YouTube channel, www.aacps.org/youtube. I will call speakers in the order that they have signed up. If a speaker is unavailable at the time that I announce their name, I will move them to the bottom of the list and call them at the end of the hearing. Each speaker is allotted two minutes. The yellow light below me will shine when you have 30 seconds left. The red light will shine, and you will hear a tone when your time has expired. For virtual comments, Ms. Howe will indicate when your time has expired. If you are unable to deliver your full two minutes to the board, you may email your comments to the board office at boardoffice@AACPS.org. And this evening, we only have one or two virtual comments, so we're going to begin this evening with our virtual comments. And first individual is Curtis Cook. Curtis?
I think I hear audio, so that is me, right? I appreciate the board taking the time to hear my comments today. My son is a student at Lithgow Elementary School, and he's a fourth grader. And we walk to school every day on Camp Meade, and I almost got hit twice crossing with the crossing guard on 170. So one of the things I was talking to Councilman Smith's office about was maybe having the school board in their budget have a mobile camera that the county can move around the county schools so that the police can try to slow people down. Now, what's interesting about 170 is it's a state highway, so it's not managed by the county. So it creates an extra layer of coordination there to get the mobile speed camera signs on them. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that that is an idea that they might be able to use, maybe if not FY25, but FY26. And that way, it's not a fixed camera, but it's moving around, protecting our schools. Additionally, I just wanted to bring up to the board that every year, when you publish the arrival and dismissal time for each school, you need to transmit that to MDOT Region 5. Otherwise, they will not program the flashing lights to the appropriate arrival and dismissal time. I was able to catch that this year, and your communications office did transmit that information to MDOT for this fiscal year, this school year, which is allowing our flashing signs to operate when the schools are operating. So I appreciate the board hearing my comments, and it saves me a little trip fighting 97 down there to come see you. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. Okay, so I don't believe we have any additional virtual comments at this time, so we will proceed with the in-person. I'm going to call up five individuals, first of all. First, we have Christie Giuliano, Kevin Buckley, Mike Golden, Janet Norman, and Joseph Wheeler, if you'll come on up, please. Yeah, feel free to have a seat. When you testify, you can certainly testify as you're seated, or if you would like to go to the party, that's fine. Christie?
Good evening. My name is Christie Giuliano, a math teacher at Broadneck High School with 29 years of professional experience on the last step of the pay scale. I was concerned when I heard Dr. Bedal say on his AACPSS.org video that teachers had received 14% in pay raises over the past two years. Here are my facts. Not being eligible for steps due to being on the last step of the salary scale, I've received 1%, 4%, and 6% increases over the last three years, which is a sum of 11%. The U.S. inflation rates posted online total 16.6% over the past three years. Plus, there's a possibility we will need to contribute 0.45% of our salary for the Time to Care Act in October, taking away from the 3% COLA budgeted by Dr. Bedal. Hence, we are still lagging behind inflation and other imposed costs. Please keep these percentages and 25-plus-year teachers in mind during the budget revision process. Furthermore, as referenced in State Superintendent Dr. Chandre's 2022 Maryland State Board of Education Teacher Workforce Report, 55.4% of Maryland new teachers leave in their first few years of teaching voluntarily, and secondary math teachers have the most vacancies, nearly double other single-subject areas. Personally, I feel school safety, student cellphone use, grading policies, and pay are all contributing factors as to why teachers leave the profession. Hence, to help support experienced and to retain new teachers, I would like to see more funding go to the EAP program to expand and incorporate group mental health services for teachers and whole targeted professional development with trained mental health workers so teachers could learn strategies to help students currently in their classrooms who struggle with these issues. These sessions could be held virtually or in-person as cohort groups. As a result, teachers may feel they are being heard and gain new strategies in the process, as well as form connections with other teachers around the county. Teachers need these safe, positive outlets to express our thoughts so they don't go home and post nasty grams on social media sites. Thank you for listening. I consider sending a Google form to gain interest into this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley?
Yes, good evening, members of the AACPSS Board of Education. My name is Kevin Buckley, and I'm a happily retired AACPSS employee after 43 years on the system, last 13 as principal. I'm here today, however, as an alumni of Glen Burnie High School, and joined by Mike Golden and Phil Bloomfield back there, and we're all celebrating our 50th alum year of alumni, it hurts to say, but it also coincides with the 100th anniversary of the school. And they had a allow alumni to come in for a tour, and we took the tour and very impressed. The building looks really beautiful, considering how old it is. However, there is one issue, and that brings us here today, and that is the serious lack of water availability for students. Mike will share some examples, specific examples later, but as a recent administrator, I applaud the county's focus on equity. Regardless of the school or community you come from, every student should have the same access to resources, same chance to succeed. Access to this essential, basic need of water should clearly be part of equity, but it is not. During my retirement, I've been filling in at schools for administrators as needed, and I get a chance to see what other schools have. At most schools, we'll walk in from class to class. Students will pass numerous filling stations. At Glen Burnie, they have to go to another building, a different floor, all while doing that within four to five minutes in between classes. The adequate water intake can positively impact not just them physically, but children's cognitive performance, particularly short-term memory, visual attention, fine motor skills. It's all extremely important. While I recognize and ensuring this is a very essential need for equity would take a financial contribution, we plan on seeking support from statewide agencies and making a presentation to county council later in the year. Simply put, we plan on pursuing this issue until our current and future Glen Burnie High School students are not forgotten about. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Go Gophers.
Thank you. Mr. Golden?
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you this evening about this issue. I won't reiterate everything Kevin, or excuse me, Mr. Buckley said just moments ago, but we were astounded when we visited the school last fall as part of the 100th year celebration of Glen Burnie High School, to see that the water situation is rather deplorable. I wanted to dazzle you all with statistics and numbers, but unfortunately, I don't have those. The reason why I don't have them is I filed a Public Information Act request with the county school system on November 8th. Was told on November 30th that they had received my request, and to this date, you know, more than 30 days after the initial request, I haven't gotten any information. What I wanted to find out was what are the populations of all the high schools in the county, and how many drinking fountains or access to water do they have at each school, and work out a ratio that I think would come in handy. The only thing I can share with you is what we saw, and it's anecdotal, is when we visited the school, the administration building, which has the auditorium, and ironically, you know, the principal's office, has no drinking fountains. It used to have two. They were shut down and walled over because they had high lead levels, but nothing was replaced. And when you go over to the next building, the main, the old main building, it only has three drinking fountains, one per floor. It used to have six, not six per floor, but two per floor. And as Kevin mentioned, you know, these kids have to go to filling stations at a different building. It's just, it's just not workable. It's just not workable, and, you know, I really would implore you all to take this under consideration, and hopefully, maybe the next time we all meet, I'll have the statistic to share with you to prove our point. But I really do suspect that this is an equity issue, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Norman?
Good evening, President Silkworth and members of the board. I'm Janet Norman, Chair of the Annapolis Education Commission. We are a city commission appointed by the mayor and city council to advocate for the students' needs in the Annapolis cluster. As we have requested for several years now, there's a dire need for another social worker at Annapolis High. There's currently one social worker for nearly 2,150 students. Last year, when a guidance counselor was out on leave for months, our guidance counselors had 358 students per counselor. And if any of you have had high schoolers go through recently, you know how incredibly complex it is getting them to their next step post-high school. There is a lot of work that our counselors and social workers do bureaucratically for graduation requirements. They are miracle workers, but 1 to 358 does not give them the resources they need. We, at our January 3 meeting, the Annapolis Education Commission passed a unanimous motion to please support the social worker positions within Dr. Bedell's budget, and for him, if he was here, to place that social worker at Annapolis High. We can't tout the benefits of restorative justice that our kids need to be taught without the staff people to do so. And in your meeting with the mayor and city council leaders on September 8, it was noted that Dr. Bedell's priority goals, goal is for AACPSS to become a restorative school district. And then you also heard from the one social worker, Ms. Carrie Muller, at Annapolis High, talking about the overwhelming need. So we have students living in nights and days and weeks of gunfire and nobody to help resolve that situation. So I appreciate your attention to the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler?
A little bit shorter. The board, thank you for your time and consideration. I'm a member of the ASME General Maintenance, and I wanted to talk about and take into consideration the, over top of the superintendent's COLA, if it could be possibly higher, and also because we have a lot of core, core group of hard-working individuals that are the foundation of the school system. They're the ones that get the kids to and from school. They're the ones that prepare the lunches. They're the ones that, like myself, are the ones that keep the equipment operational, the hard-working custodians that are there even like during the harsh weather, when all the kids and the staff are all sent home. Everyone's making sure that leaks were being taken care of, tiles were being replaced. Everybody was working so hard. In the, in the presentation that the county financial guy brought up of showing over top of the inflation, the inflation that was done over two years are projected is to come down. Now, that is a projection that is obviously done off of what the Federal Reserve is stating, that they would bring the interest rates down, but per Jerome Powell, he even stated that we would not see something like that at minimum for like six months going into the year. So then that leaves us into what's called a sticky inflation, meaning that the inflation will come down much slower than it does when it came up, which was much more drastic. Also, the year of, excuse me, the year of 2022, the COLA of what we got did not obviously get anywhere near of what the inflation rate was at the, what the county had, 7.9%, and we had much lower than that. So just a consideration of looking at what the COLA would be possibly a little bit more higher than what the superintendent has offered, just to help take care of the inflation and a lowering of inflation because of the possible sticky inflation. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to call up an additional five individuals. First of all, Doug Little, Amber Zamwalt, Sharice Sephas, Victoria Clark, and Jorge Corodoba. Doug Little? Okay, Doug's not here at the moment. Okay, so Amber Zamwalt.
Hello, my name is Amber Zamwalt, and I'm a military wife of 13 years and a mother of three children within the Anne Arundel County School System. My youngest child, who's in third grade, has a diagnosis of moderate to severe autism and requires significant support. Our zone's elementary school is Four Seasons Elementary. However, he attends Wachappel Elementary School due to the fact that Four Seasons does not have a self-contained classroom to meet his special needs education. The staff at Wachappel does not have the skill set to follow his IEP or BIP. Instead, they call me on average once per week, sometimes twice, as well as email me, and are inadvertently reinforcing his behavior. This is making the situation worse over time. I believe with the right funding, we could hire more staff and properly train our teachers, teachers assistants, special educators, and staff to work constructively with these kids and their families. The comparable services between our last duty station and AACPSS were significantly lacking here, and I was treated with disrespect among other things while trying to advocate for the special needs services of my children and what they deserve. The lack of respect and dignity created mistrust between me and the IEP team, enough so that I felt impelled to hire an advocate at great cost to our family. What I would like to see change within the school system is a requirement for staff to follow federal and state laws for such as when obtaining consent to assess students, conducting IEP meetings, timely notifications to parents, following legal documents such as IEPs and BIPs, halting suspensions and referrals of students with disabilities, providing accurate information to parents so that they can make informed educational decisions among other things, providing training and staff development to teachers, clinicians, and other stakeholders so that they have the knowledge and tools to make data-driven decisions and provide appropriate supports and interventions for students with disabilities. Lastly, the program that AACPSS currently has does not meet the needs of many students and creates situations and problems because students are not appropriately placed to meet their needs. The basic treatment of students and parents with courtesy, respect, dignity, dignity, and true partners in education of their children from the very beginning of the initial referral process through program placement. And that is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sharice Sephas?
I am Sharice Sephas, a proud parent of two Freetown Elementary Dolphins and one IBNYP MacArthur Middle student. I also hold this red shirt because I'm a member of TAC. I am here today speaking as an individual TAC member and a parent of children at two schools with amazing educators. I will first speak as a parent advocate who wishes to inform you that even though teachers may smile when parents may smile when parents and leadership come into buildings, it does not always mean their morale is high. Although it is usually my goal to be a silent partner with the AACPS employees who help me educate my children, my kids begged me to attend a phenomenal winter writing workshop that also included pizza dinner and gingerbread house building. I had the chance to speak to a few Freetown Elementary Schools teachers in December. As I entered that particular Title I school, I counted over 20 educators with bright smiles, welcoming approximately 200 people into the two-hour evening event. I got the chance to speak to one of my son's teachers, and I was dismayed when I found out the majority of the people who stayed late to facilitate the program were volunteering their time. In the capacity of a parent, I ask that you, the board and Dr. Bedell, look for ways in the budget to compensate employees who do the work that is expected when they work in Title I low-performing and formerly known as challenged schools. Secondly, as a Unit One employee who is in TAC, I am, was surprised by the budget from the board over Dr. Bedell. I read some of Dr. Bedell's responses to the press release, and that is also why I'm here today. I do believe that AACPS is a good place to work. I question if employees know how to communicate whether their morale truly is high or low when we read a budget proposal that are, proposals that are disappointing without using our spokespeople's like our union president. I appreciate Dr. Bedell for saying he wants to work with TAC, and I hope that in the process, all employees learn how to clearly communicate their morale. I ask the board to consider asking the county for more funding to better support its employees. As a parent and employee, I know that my students win when seasoned educators are retained and respected by proper compensation and community advocates. I know the people at Freetown, MacArthur, and all AACPS buildings work hard. I hope that the board and Dr. Bedell will consider increasing the budget request it gives to the county council to truly boost morale.
Thank you. Victoria Clark.
Good evening, and thank you for having us and listening to us, guys. So my name is Victoria Clark. I am with Transportation. I have worked for Anarundel County Transportation Department in the last 20 years in multiple different capacities. I'm talking to you today about the COLA increase for the Unit Three and for our school bus drivers, our school bus attendants, our custodial staff, our logistics, our maintenance staff. Without being able to work in our own and live in our own county, we don't have a living wage. Most of us work two jobs. Most of us have to go out of county in order to get substantial or comparable pay. I can't tell you how many times we lose good people that want to work here and live in this county and we support our county, but we can't afford to work in this county. Instead, we lose good people all the time and go to, they go to Howard County, they go to PG because the pay is more comparable. We do training, we do hiring, not only for Anarundel County employees, but also contractors. And years ago, when we first signed up and started working for Anarundel County, our health packages and our health insurance was a really good draw to draw people in and to keep us there. But now those things are changing. With inflation and with the time that things are going, it really is hard to make ends meet. And we're losing good, good people more and more. If you go onto the AACPS website and you look at those job listings, it's not getting shorter. We're having a hard time bringing new people in because they can just drive 30 minutes to the left or 30 minutes to the right and make more per hour. So the COLA raises that they're offering us, even though we do appreciate it, it's not enough to sustain us. So how can we live in a county, but we can't afford to work in it to support it? Thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Jorge Cordoba.
Good evening, Boards of Education. I'm Jorge Cordoba, a longtime educator with AACPS since 2007. I'm also a National Board Certified Teacher that doesn't get the NBCT stipend due to being a PPW. This should be examined. There is no PPW NBCT certification, and folks in my same situation should be receiving their NBCTs stipend. The Federal Reserve Bank calculates that, that 2023 inflation to be of 4%. A COLA below 4% will only depreciate our salaries. It is also very important to acknowledge that health costs went up this school year. Therefore, educators' wages have substantially depreciated, and with a COLA of 3% will continue to depreciate even more. This will only lead to more teacher vacancies. Please provide your educators with a COLA higher than inflation. If not, the teacher retention issue will only become worse. As a former ESOL teacher co-teaching algebra, I trained brand-new teachers for several years in how to work with ESOL students. Later on, many of these teachers left the county and went to neighboring districts for better wages. I provided daily training to those teachers, and now other districts improve their scores, weird scores, with these well-trained professionals. When I started as a PPW, two experienced PPWs, Ms. Michelle Walters and Ms. Karina Sotti, provided me with support and strategies on how to deal with many different situations. My public thanks to both of them. They did this out of goodwill and because they have the know-how skills. As you can see with these two personal examples, the most valuable asset of this organization is experienced educators such as myself that give training and advice without even having to ask for it. Experienced educators solve issues that the school system cannot solve on, on its own. Make no mistake about that. Please stop losing experienced educators to other districts. Please provide experienced educators a bonus for their loyalty to this school system. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call up the next group. First of all, we have Christina Corona, Dawn Austin, Erica McFarland, Will Johnson, and if Doug Little is now in the room.
My name is Christina Corona. I've taught for over two decades in this county. During that time, I've suffered from stagnant wages and inequitable salaries and have seen too many of my fellow educators abandon this county for better pay ones, while others simply left the profession entirely. Fortunately, this county has begun heading in the right direction. We now have county leaders who finally resolved those pay inequities. It was refreshing to hear our superintendent be honest by pointing out how embarrassing our salaries were and then work to do something about it. Last year, our starting teacher's salary went from 19th in the state to fourth, and all of us got a 6% COLA, the highest in years. However, it seems there's a perception that now all has been resolved. This is simply not the case. Classroom teacher vacancies, after plateauing, have been creeping up. As of yesterday, we are at 113. While huge gains were made for starting salaries, salaries for those at the top step, year 25, have not received the same increases. Yes, there was the 6% last year, but besides that, for educators who have 30 and 40 years of experience, their pay has been essentially stagnant for many years. One year of gains does not instantly erase years of economic hurt. Memories are long, and veteran educators have been wounded. To rebuild trust, we need to know that last year's 6% COLA was not a one-time effort. I urge you to amend this budget to go beyond 3% so that we get ahead of inflation. Personal budgets have been, had to be tightened, impacted even more for many, especially our early-career educators, as federal student loan repayments have restarted. Ultimately, if we want to serve our students best, then we need well-staffed schools with experienced educators who have the capacity to mentor our newer ones. I urge you, as you finalize this budget, to make a long-term commitment to this county's educators. Make clear to us what our future COLAs will be for the next two or even three years. Give us long-term financial security and show us that you value the retention of educators as much as you do our recruitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Austin.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dawn Austin. I am a parent of four students that, four students, four children that have attended school in Anarundel County, the stepparent to three others that also attended school here. I am an Anarundel County resident, a voter. I am also a Unit One member of TAC. So I'm here tonight to speak to you about my concerns as both a parent and a Unit One TAC member. First of all, as a parent, I'm very enthusiastic about Dr. Bedell's plan to expand the athletic programs in our county. I, I think that that sounds great. My children have been involved in athletics, not only at the high school level, but county athletics at the middle school level. So to incorporate that into our middle school program would be wonderful. I know there are plenty of other Unit One members who I know personally, whose children are also involved in these programs, and there's a lot of enthusiasm about that. That said, it's very disheartening when the cost to expand these programs may be borne on the backs of the Unit One members in this county. When a very paltry 3% COLA is suggested for Unit One members, what we hear is that while these athletic programs are valued, our profession as teachers and related service providers and other Unit One members is not as valued. So especially now, as we're seeing inflation rates in excess of 4%, a 3% COLA is effectively a pay cut. I urge you to seriously consider what message that is sending to the Unit One members in the county. I'm sorry, I will wrap this up very quickly. What message that is sending to all of us? We urge you to strongly reconsider the budget and request additional funding so that the Unit One members are, A, shown that they are properly valued, and B, not bearing the cost of this expansion of the athletic programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica McFarland.
Good evening. My name is Erica McFarland. I'm a parent in the Chesapeake Cluster, and I'm here to advocate for a higher cost of living for our, our educators. Our educators, as you all are aware, are absolute rock stars. They have, they have brought us through unprecedented times during this, this pandemic. Having worked in the classroom with some of them, I have seen the heart they have for our students. As a parent, I see, you know, at the beginning, middle, end of each school year, you know, asking for us to help them fund the snacks that they provide our children, help them to set up their classrooms. These are all things that these teachers are providing, often out of their own pockets because they care so much for our students. And I know that every dollar we invest in these wonderful educators will be brought back to our students. So I'm asking you to please look at the budget, see where we can improve the pay for our teachers, and continue to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Will Johnson. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Point Pleasant Elementary in Glenburnie. I want to address some of the concerns regarding the recently proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. While our superintendent has laid out the fiscal challenges in commendable detail, it's essential to acknowledge the personal impact that this budget may have on each of us. I understand the superintendent's commitment to fiscal responsibility, but we cannot ignore the potential discrepancies that affect our livelihoods. That's, the statement made last week by the superintendent about pay disparities raises questions, and the assurances about reduced workload and improved morale do not align in reality with many, many of the things that we are facing as educators. I currently cannot afford to live in our county, and when my car broke down last week, I could not afford to get another without assistance from my family. Let's be honest, the proposed budget increase is not sufficient to meet the rising cost of living for staff. The average rate of inflation, as has been said nationally last year, was 4%. Again, the, in the state of Maryland, that was much higher. We will be taking a pay decrease next year if the 3% goes through. Additionally, the increase, the increase in vacancies and looming possibility of the change to our health insurance create uncertainty about our financial well-being. As educators, we pour our hearts into our work, and we deserve a budget that reflects the value of our contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to call up the next group. Nicole Disney Bates, Melissa McCarg, Mary Ann Oliver, and Larissa Lefler. And if Doug Little is in the room. Doug Little.
Is it all me now? All right.
Nicole.
It is. All right. Hello, President Silkworth, Honorable Board of Education Members. It's been a bit. I'm Nicole Disney Bates, TAC president. And today, I'm not going to share the data that I had originally planned to. I was going to share that our COLA average over the past five years has been one of the lowest in the state, or how the federal government received a 5% COLA, or how inflation, as of today, is higher than expected. No, today, it's not a day for numbers. It's a day for me to tell you, I can't keep up. We, we can't keep up. My baby, who's not such a baby anymore, is five now. She was diagnosed with celiac disease when she was two, and boy, was she sick. She was underweight, she had GI issues, and it was scary. We're lucky, though. AACPS has amazing health insurance. It let us bring her to the best. Hopkins, get diagnosed by the best, but treated by the best, well, the treatment is a gluten-free diet. The people providing this treatment, my husband Jared and I. If you've ever seen the price of gluten-free food, it is expensive, and it gets, it just gets harder and harder to keep up. When things that used to cost $1 now cost $1.20, it's hard to keep up. And with a 3% COLA and slow wage growth from the past, we will never keep up. Subtracting the rise of healthcare, food, and the general cost of living, we will just never keep up. I don't say this as a place to be unkind, but from a place of deep-seated worry. I worry that our carefully-placed dominoes will fall. Our boat, that boat I've talked about, it's going to need to be bailed out again by our hard-working teachers, related service providers, administrators, and support services. I worry we will be back in that place, and I'm asking you to consider what a living COLA will look like. Consider where we are today and what we need to move forward because we need to keep up. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa.
Good evening. I'm Melissa McCarg. I'm a seventh-grade language arts teacher, currently at Arundel Middle, but previously at Lyndale Middle. And I can tell you, the teacher vacancies took their toll on Lyndale. I was a co-teacher that had no special educator in my classroom, starting the end of September of last year, for the entire school year. We're very fortunate, no teacher, or no parent brought a lawsuit. What was happening was basically illegal. IEPs are federal documents. They are required to have their service hours. We need to attract our teachers, and we need to retain our teachers. Nicole may not talk data, but I have the last four years of many counties, and we are not keeping up. Allegheny County is ahead of Anarundel. Garrett County is ahead of Anarundel in terms of increase. For us to be behind some of the poorer counties in our state is appalling. Our teachers deserve a living wage. Our teachers deserve to have an increase that is not eaten away by healthcare and inflation. Our teachers deserve to keep up and be able to be in our county, not only working, but living. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Oliver.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Oliver, and I've been a speech-language pathologist, or SOP, in this county for 12 years. I'd like to ask what is going to be done about the salary scales for specialists and related service providers, which include SOPs, physical therapists, and occupational therapists? We have always had separate salary scales due to the fact that we have increased educational requirements. But now, however, because the Maryland blueprint does not recognize related service providers, the salary scales no longer serve their intended purpose of recognizing and rewarding these additional educational requirements. All related service providers already have National Board certification from our governing institutions, as well as separate state licensure. I fully support many of my friends that are teachers and special ed teachers pursuing their National Board certification, but this practice with not addressing our salary scales is not equitable in a county that is all about equity. I understand most things come down to money and funding, but we are paying approximately 26 contract speech pathologists in this county because we cannot find enough willing to work here on a permanent basis. This is a significant number of people in our department, as well as a This is a significant number of people in our department, as well as a significant amount of money being paid to contractors rather than full-time employees. As part of the special ed department, we work with some of the most vulnerable students in this county, and we will continue to have rising vacancies and temporary employees if this issue is not addressed quickly. And yet, I don't see any additional speech pathology positions in the new budget, which means we're going to continue paying these contractors at a very high rate of pay. And I was hoping to see if any of you had any questions for me, but thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Larissa?
Sorry. Is this on? Oh, yes, it's on. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for giving me your time. I just wanted to say very briefly, I wanted to share a story with you. Full disclosure, I'm a brand-new teacher, started in August. I encouraged a friend of mine also to be in a career changer, if that wasn't obvious, but I encouraged a friend of mine to also become a teacher, and I had been encouraging her to look for openings in Anaronda County because that's where I was looking. This is where I live. This is where my children are going to school. And I really was an advocate for her to do that. She did land herself a job. She went over to Baltimore County, and I, at first, was a little, I was super excited when I got the job and I got the call, and I do remember feeling a little defeated and sad when I found out that she was making more money than myself. That being said, as a new teacher, I'm sure you understand that it's a very overwhelming job. There's a lot to learn. And my, even at this point in the year, to make a really long story short, my friend has already resigned her job in Baltimore County Schools, and I won't offend anybody by repeating what she said in terms of like how hard the job was and how little you got paid and how underappreciated you were. She's constantly encouraging me to keep going, and I just wanted to echo everybody else's concerns that there are moments when you're standing in the classroom and you're feeling overwhelmed as a new person and you're thinking to yourself, did I make the right choice with my life? Is this the right thing to do? I think there's other professions that I could look for that maybe wouldn't be so stressful and maybe wouldn't be so emotionally demanding or physically demanding, and I could do more with my degree. But Anaronda County took a chance on me, and I would like to stick around and continue to get a higher education. I'd like to get a master's degree, and I just worry that with a small increase that that won't be feasible for myself. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask, once again, is Doug Little, is Doug Little with us this evening?
Oh.
Mr. Little?
My name's Doug Little, and I'm with Transportation. I've been driving special-need kids for 20 years. I'm not just going to speak for Transportation, but everybody, custodians, maintenance, food service, teachers too. All of us, I feel, is underpaid. The cost of living is not what we need. I mean, we need more, but your offering is not enough. And if the roles were reversed and you was in our shoes, it would be different. And that's basically all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. So, ladies and gentlemen, our next public hearing is scheduled for Thursday, January 25, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM in the auditorium at Old Mill High School. If you provided comment this evening, you are not eligible to speak again on Thursday. Once again, we'd like to thank everyone for joining us, and please drive safely and stay safe.
My name is Holly Clyderline, and I am thankful to be one of two school counselors at Oak Hill Elementary. I appreciate Dr. Bedell's request for additional student services positions, including 8.5 school counseling positions. It indicates the level of need across the county and the acknowledgement that school counselors are crucial to student success. I'm concerned about filling those positions. It's my understanding that this fall, there were six vacant school counseling positions. Two elementary schools had no counselors at all. Here are some barriers you're facing. One, there's a shrinking supply of school counselors in the pipeline. Graduate programs are seeing fewer students choose school counseling due to the demands of the job and the expense for the degree. Two, it takes longer to be eligible to start this work. There is no such thing as a provisional school counselor due to the potential harm that could cause. Most master's degree programs are now 60 credits, such as Loyola and Bowie State. Three, you're competing against every other county for the same candidates. Four, one of the largest groups of new school counselors was hired like me in 2000. That group is approaching our salary limit and retirement. Five, you're actively disincentivizing anyone from becoming a school counselor in this county by denying us the National Board salary enhancement. I've heard some counties are making school counselors eligible, making Anaronda less attractive. One counseling intern told her supervisor she can't afford to accept a position next fall because it would be a pay cut. You don't have control over the first four obstacles, but you do have control over the fifth. Last year, we had verbal commitments from the county executive and county council members to approve an amendment that would provide eight school counselor MBCTs the same incentive as our colleagues. You wouldn't even propose one. Please include the recommended school counseling positions in your budget and do more to recruit and retain those positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, our next public hearing is scheduled for Thursday, January 25, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM, and it will take place in the auditorium at Old Mill High School. Again, if you provided comment this evening, you are not eligible to speak again on that date. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please drive safely. Have a great night.[1771.13][1771.13][music]